Councilor Belkot, it looks like you're muted.
Thank you. Welcome to the May 22 Counselor Time Meeting. Staff will call roll call.
Councilor Young?
Here.
And Councilor Marshall?
Here.
And Councilor Belkot?
Here.
Councilor Bowerman?
Present.
And Chair Medveji?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
None today.
Right, hearing none, therefore no amendments are noted. We will move on to public comment on agenda items only. Kind reminder, agenda items only. Do we have anyone in the room signed up to speak?
We do, Chair, just one moment, Kristen's grabbing the list.
Hey, yes, signed up, we do have, it looks like seven on the list, there may be more who have not signed up, and a couple online. Richard Dryland?
My name is Richard Dryland. Regarding Camp Bonneville, the Chair recently made misleading statements to the media about the conveyance of this property and called anyone who questioned the use of the shooting range at Camp Bonneville nimby's. We now know that the county has been quietly with very limited public involvement attempting to revise the use restriction on Camp Bonneville embedded in the quitclaim deed. This means the county very well knows the use of restrictions of a conservation conveyance, yet they are moving forward with an Oregon FBI shooting range contract that violates those restrictions. This also means that a county parks manager attempted to manipulate the record. Apparently, this staff member intentionally misstated that Camp Bonneville was a parks conveyance in a written slide at the very last Camp Bonneville Advisory Group CAG meeting and refused to change the record when a CAG member attempted to correct him. This is the same staff member that misstated to the council and the public that the FBI had been a good tenant when he privately admitted that they routinely violate their agreement, stating the areas that Clark County Sheriff's Organization, CCSO, and the FBI have used for training outside the FBI firing range are not properly policed or cleaned. Multiple parks staff members have continually misrepresented several facts about Camp Bonneville over the last few months, which friends of Clark County, the Sierra Club, residents, and others have proven to you with public records documentation and through ongoing communications with the county. Also, is the CAG being discontinued because they know too much? Where is the openness? Where is the honesty? Where is the accountability? How can the council rely on staff briefings when so many facts have been omitted or misrepresented? And how can council be confident its decision-making is in the interest of Clark County residents? Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you for your comments.
Jim Byrne, please come up.
Good afternoon, my name is Jim Byrne and I live in Ridgefield. In the late 1990s, I served on Clark County's first Bonneville Citizens Cleanup Group, the BRAC. At that time, we were told there existed approved unexploded ordinance protocols. And spurred by the fact that children were hurt by the explosion of unexploded ordinance in Fort Ord, California after its closure, a large liability judgment was determined. Clark County should keep this in mind as Camp Bonneville unfolds to avoid similar litigation. On April 4th, I wrote the county manager asked to answer questions regarding the cleanup. Last Wednesday, Public Works told me to ask the Department of Ecology. County staff provided no answers. This is hardly the open or transparent government councilors have been promoting. As a landowner, Clark County should be able to tell citizens how much acreage has been cleaned, when was it completed, and what depth was cleared. I and we are still waiting. In the last two, the 2015 and 2022 PROS plans, the county has acknowledged a greater than 40% shortfall of available park lands in comparison to population. The 3,840 acres of Camp Bonneville was planned to reduce this deficit. This is why the amount of cleared land is so critical. How much of the 3,840 acres can be used to reduce the park deficit? We are pretty resourceful. As directed, we check DOE records. A pretty picture is not presented. Of the 3,800 acres, only 455, 12% in the central impact area were cleaned. There are also issues with buried 55 gallon drums of toxic waste and groundwater plumes coming from the sites flowing into Akamas Creek and Lake. The lake already has the severe water quality issues. The Department of Ecology states that there have been no UXO clearance on existing roads and trails in the camp, nor has the DOE signed off as to the integrity of the cleanup. In addition to UXO liability, wildfire is a major concern. The Larch Mountain wildfire team no longer exists. While a fire pretension plan is being drafted, no fire breaks currently exist in the camp and fire apparatus have not been driven over the camp's roads and bridges to check their viability. A DNR firefighting helicopter is stationed at the camp and we view this as a good thing. Thank you for your attention. Camp Bonneville will have a large effect on our future. It needs a viable Citizens Advisory Committee. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Ann Shaw?
Counselors, my name is Ann Shaw. I am speaking on my own behalf as a private citizen to briefly address two points about Camp Bonneville. First, last week, county staff responded to questions about the cleanup at Camp Bonneville saying in part, quote, "The Washington State Department of Ecology is the agency responsible for overseeing cleanup activities and ensuring compliance with the Model Toxics Control Act. All inquiries, concerns, or requests for information regarding cleanup at Camp Bonneville should be directed to Ecology." This statement is misleading. Ecology is indeed the state agency responsible for regulatory oversight of the cleanup. However, Clark County is directly responsible for actually conducting the cleanup. The prospective purchaser consent decree states, "Under this decree as amended in 2012, Clark County is responsible for undertaking the cleanup responsibilities described in Section 4B." Unquote. Clark County assumed responsibility for the cleanup of Camp Bonneville on October 3rd, 2006. Also, the memorandum of understanding between the Army and Clark County, which is a binding legal document, states, "The Army acknowledges that the county intends to contract with more and more third parties to perform environmental services. This acknowledgement, however, shall not be considered an assignment of the county's responsibilities and shall not be considered a release or waiver of any of the rights that the Army has to require the county to perform its obligations under the ESCO, which is the funding mechanism." For county staff to now claim that they are accountable only for daily operations and maintenance at Camp Bonneville is deeply troubling. How can staff possibly advise council about any aspect of Camp Bonneville if they claim to have no understanding of the cleanup status of the property? Second, council members have asked how much of Camp Bonneville has been cleaned up? Public records show that Camp Bonneville is 3,840 acres. However, only 33% of the property has actually been examined. 522 acres have been cleared to 14 inches. Another 722 acres have been surface cleared for a total of 1,244 acres. Based on the site-specific final cleanup action reports, this preliminary map shows the areas in orange that have not been cleared. Additional details need to be added to this map, but it's clear that potential hazards on vast areas of the property are unknown. Landfill 4, the large yellow circle, is roughly 91 acres. 16 unexploded ordinance, that is UXO, and 30 materials potentially presenting an explosive hazard were removed from this area during cleanup.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Greg Shaw?
Good afternoon, my name is Greg Shaw. I'm here to talk about two documents, not about any great issues, but two critical documents. Earlier today, I emailed each counselor these two important county documents that provide unusual clarity to critical issues you're considering about the camp. The first document is the clearest and most instructive summary we have about the constraints placed on the use of the property because of the former commission's specific request to the Army to take ownership of an environmentally contaminated property prior to cleanup by the Department of the Army. The Army's shorthand designation for this type of UXO contaminated parcel was an early dirty. It was early because the transfer cut short normal process and was dirty because of the unusual degree of munitions and toxic contamination. The document I'm sharing is a letter from the Chief of the Army BRAC Program to the former Director of Public Works responding to a county request to clarify, a private citizen's request to use Camp Bonneville. The BRAC manager wrote succinctly, three sentences, pay attention, these are critical things to understand. Quote, "Camp Bonneville was transferred via a conservation of natural resources conveyance under the Early Transfer Authority. The Early Transfer limits what actions can be done on the property prior to the completion of the environmental cleanup. The Conservation of Natural Resources Conveyance limits property usage to what is identified in the reuse plan and the proposed usage in this case is not listed in the county plan. Five years after this letter, Clark County has still not reached completion of environmental cleanup at Camp Bonneville. The county has not completed all of the remedial actions, much less begun the process to have the environmental cleanup certified. Because of this, Clark County's use of Camp Bonneville is now severely limited by the Early Transfer. Those limits include restrictive land use, restrictive residential, and other comprehensive limitations now incorporated in the deed. Finally, until the environmental cleanup is completed, even citation of an activity listed in the 1998 drafted reuse plan has no standing. This is not available until after completion of the environmental cleanup. For the record, I note that the current FBI range location is not approved in the reuse plan. As early as 1996, the FBI acknowledged safety issues and had agreed to move." So I have a limited amount of time, so I'm going to skip. The second document is a copy of the 2012 Clark County Use Agreement for the Clark County Sheriff's Office to use Camp Bonneville for training. We have never been shown this document and it has been never raised in any council consideration of the FBI range. It is a travesty that we found this in the last few days. This needs to be part of any discussion of new use agreements for the range. I don't know if you've seen it, but the community needs time to understand how the impact created by not informing the public about this information.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Patty Reynolds?
Booster. Thank you. My name's Patty Reynolds. First, I want to thank the Friends of Clark County for their research, support, and rational discussion regarding the nearly 4,000 acres of the land currently being managed by our council and their staff. Next, I want to let our community know that a recent statement made by the Chair to The Columbian is an inaccurate representation of those of us who live in the Camp Bonneville neighborhood as we have tried to be a part of the transfer, cleanup, and repurposing process since the base closed in 1995. Our focus has been and continues to be communication with all involved agencies and support for the existing deed and governments from the Army for the protection, appropriate use, and preservation of this land. The Chair's comment that we are against the FBI shooting range because we don't want it in our neighborhood is simply untrue. He was not here prior to 1995. When the base was active, the soldiers trained on the site or traveled on our neighborhood in their trucks and jeeps, they were not a negative to us. The Chair's comment only served to incorrectly and insultingly describe the residents of the Prebstow area. The FBI has been using and polluting the site without regard for rules or regulations and without paying for their usage or any cleanup, nor is there a fire prevention expectation. Months ago, Land Commissioner France and her staff admitted a formal plan for prevention and the fighting of wildfires at Camp Bonneville needed to be created. Common sense suggests a complete halt to any activities beyond cleanup until this plan is completed and shared with the community, preferably prior to the onset of the next wildfire season. DNR crews residing at Camp Bonneville must remain vigilant to any conditions which may increase the wildfire risk. This may be in direct conflict with the unfettered FBI and CCSO personnel use of the property. France and the DNR noted they expected a significant increase in wildfire west of the Cascades in the next and in future fire seasons. Certainly, the presence of the FBI, CCSO, and any other personnel invited to use the shooting range needs to come with adherence to a strict fire prevention plan and a plan for accountability should a fire occur with loss of timber, livestock, neighborhood property, or human life. The council must halt all activities interfering with or increasing the need for cleanup until the unexploded ordinance, water, and land contamination has been brought to the best outcome possible. At that time, rental contracts for the shooting range could be considered, but absolutely prohibited during all periods when the state closes forests during the heightened wildfire risk. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Carmen Delion?
Do I push a button? No, not today. Okay, it says to talk on the agenda minutes of May 15th. So I'm talking about the minutes of May 15th. And I already watched all the videos, so I know this was talked about. At about minute 46, Sue here was talking about the fireworks. And between, you know, minute 10 and minute 35, they also talked about tourism. Well, just so you know, the fact that they killed the fireworks, they killed about 30,000 people pumping money into the city. So if they wanted tourism, they should have let the fireworks be happening every year instead of, there's no fireworks for how many years? It's, they used to have, you know, they put the whole Ferris wheel and they put hot dog stands and play a band and make money. So if you're talking about tourism coming to Vancouver, Washington, well, they killed part of it and that was in summer, that was every 4th of July. Now, if you want to make money next year for tourism, I suggest you look at the fireworks again. And if you want to know, I've never seen the fireworks cause a wildfire. It's been pretty much safe. And I know that the councilwoman says she didn't want to hear stories, but that's just shutting down public opinion. And you should look forward to being able to talk with your public and get public opinion on things like the man said. You guys are doing things without people knowing and it needs to be more, you know, open and, and what do you call it? Clarity with what's really going on because nobody's being held accountable for lying and presenting false information to get their checks from you guys. And they need to be able to prove their stuff and if they're lying, they should be held accountable, as I've repeated before. I don't know how much time I have, but I was hoping that because at, I don't know which minute, they talked about a pride month again. And I was hoping for July to be Independence Month because we should celebrate all month. Hey, they want to celebrate pride all month? We should celebrate Independence Day all month. It's just fair. And just so you know, that it was never meant as an insult. The Greeks, when Alexander the Great conquered all the territories he did, the men chewed on koa leaves. And as they marched, they chewed to kill the pain. And of course, they didn't bring along women, so there was men having sex with men. And it wasn't really frowned upon because of that. It was frowned upon because you weren't repopulating and back then, human life had value. And if you're not contributing to propagating the human specimen, then you're not helping humanity. So the magazine Psychology Today with 20,000 participants studied pride and the root of pride is insecurity. The root of pride was actually the first sin. Lucifer got kicked out of heaven because of his sin of pride. And Odin kicked out Thor from Bon Hala 2.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am.
Michael Lynch?
Oh, counselors, I'm here to ask you for your strong support towards supporting mental health sales tax dollars being utilized on a bridge shelter to be opened by the city of Vancouver. Within this bridge shelter, we will be housing a significant percentage of chronic homelessness, specifically through the first five years at least. And as we know, we have high percentage of mental illness within those chronic homeless folks. And so a 30% request is basically far below the number. The reason why I believe you should entertain this request is because having a high concentration of the folks who need the services means that those services from different providers can also be delivered more economically on a per person basis. The only other facility or the only other housing within the, within Clark County that would have a higher percentage of people with mental health issues is Clark County Jail. But it's very ineffective and inefficient to deliver those services in a lockdown environment. And so, again, I would urge your consideration to, to imagine how in a bridge shelter, which is bringing together many, many different operators to provide the necessary services to get them, the people being served, the clientele being served, to get them to housing, to be successful in life. That's the bridge metaphor right there. So thank you for considering it. Thank you for your thought on it. The city of Vancouver, while it doesn't always align with how the county does homelessness, the facts are that they're filling in gaps. And those gaps naturally will occur in anybody's system. And it's those gaps that are actually making a huge difference that we can see and feel and measure in our city. So thank you for your support.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have more folks in the room signed up to speak?
Yes, Teresa Hardy?
Teresa Hardy, H-A-R-D-Y. Public records show records of violations by the FBI and CCSO of their shooting range agreement. And staff has been alerted that these activities continue to contaminate this property. These actions undermine the county's efforts to the review of the cleanup of Camp Bonneville to determine further needed cleanup. The Oregon FBI has invited law enforcement organizations from over 100 agencies to use the property since 2012. And the county has no information to assess the FBI's liability for future remediation from their contamination. According to several residents, the FBI uses the property even when all state forests have closed due to heightened wildfire risk. And staff knows they've used these explosives when they shouldn't, which puts the residents near Camp Bonneville in danger. Use of the shooting range at Camp Bonneville by the Oregon FBI has no benefit to the residents of Clark County. The Portland FBI and the CCSO have other more appropriate options for firearms training than a property that is restricted by the conveyance to be used for the conservation of natural resources. Given the potential liability issues related to UXO, contamination and wildfire risk, allowing the FBI, the Oregon FBI, to use this property rent-free is a disservice to the county residents. Issuing a new contract does not fit with the county's own goal of closing out the cleanup for this property as the continued operation of the range will not allow for the close-up of the cleanup. This is just another example of county contracts that have been incredibly one-sided and have not been monitored or enforced. Residents in the county have continued to see a pattern of contracts that result in lack of public benefits and loss of revenue. Why would we want to draw up another contract with a bad tenant that poses immense liabilities and risks? In addition, we now know that park staff has been quietly moving to alter the restrictions outlined in the deed without public knowledge or input. The county mission statement emphasizes integrity, openness, and accountability. We have not been seeing this. The county should promptly close the shooting range, establish a long-standing CAG, keep the current CAG members, and establish a safety evaluation panel to properly manage this property. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak? I do have, looks like four people online right now. We'll start with Kirk. Please go ahead.
I'm the neighbor of Camp Bonneville. My comments today are regarding Camp Bonneville, specifically a suggestion to help deal with some of the confusion surrounding Camp Bonneville. As you may know, several of us neighbors have been told that we were wrong about some of the issues that we have brought up regarding the status of the camp slash cleanup. In most cases, that has been the extent of the conversation. As you've seen in a couple of recent emails, the staff at Ecology has admitted that we were right about those issues that they researched. Unfortunately, a small number of issues raised have been chased down thus far. Thanks, my suggestion. I propose that the council direct the staff to create an online repository for all current issues, citizen-supplied, work-staff-supplied concerning Camp Bonneville. The staff would research them, add any hard evidence that addresses the issue one way or another, and then, based on evidence, determine if the issue is valid or invalid. If valid, then list what next steps need to be taken to eliminate the issue. Specifically, two main things. First, any issues that were found to actually be resolved or inaccurate, then go to our neighbors, share the evidence with them, and ultimately eliminate that issue from being an ongoing concern. Second, if the issue is found to be valid, then validate the issue and allow for corrective action to be taken, for which the repository would be updated to show what was done, so that there's no longer concern. If the county is ever going to feel confident in the county's ability to determine proper use of the property, it's going to take trust-building efforts like this to win the confidence of the citizens. So again, I urge the council to direct the county staff to set up a repository and implement this plan. Thank you for considering this option.
Thank you.
Monica Zizweta?
...ever offered any explanation to the public as to how a shooting range does not violate the restrictions on Camp Bonneville as a conservation conveyance under 10 U.S. Code 2694A, Conveyance of Surplus Real Property for Natural Resource Conservation. These restrictions, based on this code, are outlined in the Quit Claim Deed and Memorandum of Understanding for Camp Bonneville. The code states, "The deed of conveyance may permit the recipient..." the recipient of the property to conduct incidental revenue-producing activities on the property that are compatible with the use of the property for conservation purposes." Only the forest management plan was ever identified as a compatible use. A shooting range and all the under permitted, all the other unpermitted activities law enforcement carries out on the property are not incidental, not revenue-producing, and not compatible with the use of the property for conservation purposes. I am asking, please, for the county lawyers to check to see if the council will be violating federal law if a shooting range continues. Furthermore, law enforcement uses the property even when the state has closed all state forests due to heightened wildfire risk, putting the residents of Clark County who live near this 3,800 acres of dense carbon-sequestering forest in danger and putting the loss of the forest itself in danger. According to the U.S. Forest Service, firearms in forests are a wildfire risk, and the hot undercarriages of vehicles parked during times of heightened wildfire risk can also start a fire. They also have been caught using explosives. Why are our law enforcement, who are supposed to protect us, putting residents' safety at risk? We've got to find a safer place for law enforcement to do these activities. This is a huge climate issue. Please close the shooting range at Camp Bonneville. Establish a longstanding Camp Bonneville Citizens Advisory Board that includes the current Climate Advisory Group members and establish a safety evaluation plan for Camp Bonneville. And my second thought, pride is often associated with confidence, self-esteem, and a sense of accomplishment, while insecurity is characterized by doubt, uncertainty, and a lack of confidence. While pride can be a positive emotion, it is important to ensure that it does not stem from a place of insecurity or superiority over others. It's important to strike balance between healthy pride and humility. Remember, we are all human beings deserving of thriving and living at peace without judgments. Thank you for your time. I hope everyone has a productive and wonderful day.
Thank you for your comments.
Wendy, please go ahead.
Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes, we can.
Good afternoon, Wendy Cleveland, Sierra Club. So to begin with, thank you to everyone who's come out to speak about Camp Bonneville today. I want to start with, I support our law enforcement. However, I do not believe that any branch of law enforcement should be contaminating a conservation property. They shouldn't be violating their agreement with the county or disturbing communities around Camp Bonneville. I ask you that you do not reward the FBI with another contract. Close that shooting range, put the CCSO somewhere more appropriate, and begin taking wildfire prevention measures. Additionally, I, I want to ask that you allow the CAG to continue to review the cleanup of Camp Bonneville. And the continuation of the CAG, I believe, is vital to transparency and oversight in our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay, and caller, please state your name and go ahead with your comment.
Kimberly Goheen Elbin, Patriot Life Citizen of Clark County, Washington. Great job, citizen speakers, and continue the good fight. And let's have a Clark County, let's have Clark County audited as they are not transparent and mislead the citizens as we are their bosses and must continue in assembly of what our forefathers warned us to do. I have not seen a map for the bridge shelter, but my concerns would be car and noise pollution. As for Camp Bonneville, it seems that they don't want patriots to use a shooting range. And do not close any public lands again as you plan to do during the next plandemic. Wildfires are exacerbated by the chemicals that are being illegally sprayed all over the world, actually. It settles down on our forests, and then they ignite like a firecracker. And that's the problem there. So we need to listen to geoengineeringwatch.org on that one to find out what's going on. I'll speak to the minutes of May 15th. I spoke of the CRDC and the issue paper number six, identifying lands for aggregate mining. And I believe this agenda is to mine 890 acres of Shalachi Prairie for rock and then load it onto our railroad from Shalachi Prairie to Vancouver and will be used for the bridge and light rail. Mayor Ann Ogil will put light rail if citizens don't assemble immediately on this subject. She could care less about citizens voting down light rail three times as they spent millions and millions of hard-earned tax dollars on this project. So we need to assemble against light rail. I've mentioned requiring a quorum of citizens there when you pass millions and millions of hard-earned tax dollars because the citizens are still trying to survive the plandemic takeover and during, during a recession with inflation and are clueless to your agendas. It also mentioned the constant Pride Month agendas that you have, I believe, is designed in part to accept not only LBGQ agendas, but to ready the citizens to accept illegal immigrants, of which are mostly people of color. And if I, as a citizen, object vigorously to this agenda, I will be deemed a white supremacist or a racist. I'm putting on record that I mentioned constant interruptions from this council. So I want to say that on May 8th council meeting, I played a recording of what I spoke on May 1st, and the recording did record very well. Yet Mr. Chair, the Chair Medvedji interrupts my time to state he couldn't hear the recordings. I believe that was a lie, and I believe it was part of his deception to not hear people speak. His constant interruption.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone, do we have any others online?
No, we don't. And just double checking, no one else in the room? I think that concludes comments.
All right. Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to old business. Item 4.1, minutes from May 15th, 2024. Is there a motion for item 4.1, the meeting minutes from May 15th?
To approve.
Is there a second? Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? The motion carries. Moving on to Camp Bonneville, item 4.2, we'll be presenting.
Yeah, I'll, I'll start off first. Good afternoon, council. So the first thing I want to do say is, you know, we, I say we, county as a whole, including council and staff, do appreciate the community's interest in Camp Bonneville. And the one thing that we all have in common is we want to ensure that the cleanup is done correctly. That is our goal. So today, the staff, as I have mentioned, at least two or three public meetings, the staff was going to come back and talk about the current status for the cleanup and potential path forward, as well as just an update on the FBI contract. It's a very narrow, focused discussion. There have been a lot of information coming in by emails or testimony that has nothing to do with the cleanup. We will capture that and update FAQs with that information. As you all know, this is, there is a complicated history, but we really need to get working on ensuring the cleanup is done and done correctly. So with that, it's my privilege to hand this over to Amber, who's been leading this effort with our team within Clark County.
Thank you, council. Amber Emery, Deputy County Manager, for the record. I'll hand it off to our Public Works staff in just a moment. But I want to echo what Kathleen said about a complex and very complicated history that we had with Camp Bonneville. And we have really looked at every detail within Public Works to figure out a path forward to not ensure, not only ensure the technical expertise needed to be on staff, but also the integrity of the process. So as we go forward, I will touch briefly right now on the FBI contract because that's one thing that we will be bringing back to council. That is not, not ready to go today. And then we'll bring that back with some, we're having in-house legal review being done with that process. So I, we do not have that available today for discussion. So I just wanted to hit that from the beginning. With that, I will hand it over to Priya and Eric and Ken for our four initiatives we'll be talking about today.
Good afternoon, council members. For the record, I'm Priya Danapal, Deputy Director of Public Works. And I'm here today with Ken Leder, Public Works Director, and Eric Harrison, our Operations Superintendent from Parks and Land Division. We thank you for the opportunity to present our update on Camp Bonneville. Like Amber mentioned, our staff have been meticulously reviewing every component of Camp Bonneville and is prepared to present to you today a proposed path forward to effectively manage this complex site. Today's presentation will detail the strategic measures we are taking to ensure the long-term success of Camp Bonneville, focusing on compliance, safety, technical support, and streamlining communication to ensure transparency and building trust. We're proposing four key initiatives in the path forward, and I'm going to hand it over to Eric to provide an overview.
Good afternoon, council. For the record, I am Eric Harrison, Operations Superintendent for Public Works. I'm here to provide you with updates on three initiatives and seek direction on one initiative. Item one, I want to provide an update. The staff has proposed hiring a new compliance manager for a limited duration of three years. The purpose of the project position is to ensure the success of the mandated five-year periodic review and the county's independent peer review of the cleanup actions. The compliance manager will have the technical expertise to ensure continuous compliance with environmental regulations and standards, enhance efficiencies and accuracy of data collection and reporting, and to facilitate communication between internal and external stakeholders. The position will also be critical in implementing a comprehensive wildfire prevention plan for Camp Bonneville. Having an internal expert will bolster our capacity to maintain rigorous standards in environmental protection efforts at Camp Bonneville and provide sustained, knowledgeable oversight throughout the review process. The staff report for this position request is with the county manager contingent on the county manager approval. The job posting for the compliance manager is tentatively scheduled for the week of May 27th of this year, which is next week. Moving on to item number two, staff has drafted an RFP, request for proposal for a mandated periodic review. The purpose of mandated periodic reviews is to ensure human health and environmental protection following cleanup actions. These reviews are required, per our consent decree, to be submitted to the Department of Ecology. They are required when the cleanups perform under, when claims perform approved under an order or when no further action opinion is issued, particularly under specific conditions like institutional controls. Clark County and the Department of Ecology will review the progress and data from these reports ensuring effectiveness of the cleanup for the duration of the consent decree. The five-year periodic review is based on criteria listed in the consent decree, page 59, section 15, and the Washington Administrative Code 173-340-420. The RFP for the mandated periodic review is scheduled for release on May 29th of this year. Moving on to item three. In this item, I'll provide an update on the Camp Bonneville Advisory Group and seek direction from council on a proposed initiative. The council previously directed an independent review of the cleanup actions at Camp Bonneville using the Camp Bonneville Advisory Group, which I will now refer to as the CAG. The limited scope of the CAG was to review cleanup actions determining what has been cleaned up and what still needs to be addressed. However, the CAG was not meeting the intent or direction of the limited scope. Therefore, staff are proposing an alternative initiative for council's consideration to fulfill the intent of council's original directive. The proposed alternative initiative includes issuing a request for proposal to hire an outside consultant to conduct an independent review of the cleanup actions. The goal is to ensure an independent and thorough evaluation of our cleanup efforts and institutional controls, enhancing transparency and confidence in our environmental protection measures. The consultant's review will provide valuable insights and recommendations supporting our commitment to maintaining the highest standards in our remediation process. Moving on to the last item, four initiatives, staff is working updating a comprehensive FAQ on Camp Bonneville that will be updated on the county's website. These FAQs will ensure that the community is well-informed about the cleanup actions at Camp Bonneville. The purpose of the FAQ is to mitigate community concerns and build trust by proactively address frequent questions and providing information on cleanup actions, cleanup effectiveness, monitoring processes, regulatory compliance. An expected outcome of this effort is that this will facilitate public participation, excuse me, public participation through accessible information and feedback channels. The FAQ will also centralize response to common inquiries and reduce repetitive individual communication, allowing the focus of the county's limited resources on the more critical aspects of the cleanup actions. The website is tentatively scheduled for June of this year, 2024. In conclusion, the proposed appointment of a limited-duration compliance manager, the initiation of a five-year periodic review, the independent review through an RFP, and the development of FAQ website are all critical steps in ensuring the continued protection and restoration of Camp Bonneville. I'm prepared to answer any general questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. We would like to obtain council feedback on the proposed initiative of issuing an RFP to hire a consultant to do, to do the independent review.
I would be happy to give thoughts on that, Chair, but I've got some other thoughts to inquire about as well.
Go ahead, councillor Berman.
This three-year compliance manager, you mentioned that they would oversee aspects of the wildfire. Are they also overseeing cleanup?
Yes, the intent of the position is to assist with the five-year periodic review of the cleanup actions and also the independent review. So they will be assisting with overseeing the effectiveness of the cleanup actions.
Okay, then if there is a compliance manager who is to oversee cleanup, why the duplication with an outside consultant to oversee the same thing?
Thank you for your question, councillor Berman. The compliance, so the, the five-year periodic review, which is, it's a mandatory requirement that for the consent decree that we're supposed to do for cleanup action effectiveness, the purpose of the compliance manager is to oversee the work of the consultant.
And I can add to that, please.
Go ahead.
The periodic review under WAC 173-340-420 identifies that the cleanup actions have generally been effective, but does not deeply investigate specific unaddressed contamination areas due to its broad scope. Under the compliance manager, the independent review would dive deeper into these specific areas. This additional scrutiny allows for the development of a targeted action plan, enhancing the overall effectiveness of the cleanup efforts. The independent review will also be, also by a consultant who hasn't looked at the site before, therefore, allowing for unbiased evaluation. So to answer the question, councillor, the compliance manager will be directly oversight on that, on that independent review process.
In that event, I'm sorry, go ahead.
If I can add one thing, this is Amber. If I can add one thing to that compliance manager. What we have found in the last two years with Camp Bonneville, and as you all know, because you see the complexity of it, is Eric is pulled in three different directions. So Camp Bonneville is one of his duties within parks that he does. And this site needs one person that's dedicated to the compliance. So this person will be overseeing the activities that we'll be doing in the next few years, which are really important activities for the cleanup review. So I just wanted to add that to.
Thank you, yeah. Well, in, in the event of the descriptions that you just gave, why not combine the duties of the compliance manager relative to cleanup with the outside consultant relative to cleanup?
So I would, let me take that and then I'll hand it over to the team. The request for us today is talking about the independent review. So when you all directed us to go out and the CAG was formed to do an independent cursory review of the cleanup action that was done, the five-year plan that Eric talked about, that's required. the five-year plan that Eric talked about, that's required, so we're going to be doing that anyway. What we're asking for direction today is, does council want an independent review of the cleanup? And if so, going out for a consultant that has not reviewed the site before gives an independent view to the cleanup. And that's really council's decision because council directed to the review of the cleanup. We're going to be doing the five-year review as part of the decree anyway, so that's a separate situation. But we're asking with establishment of the CAG, if council wants to proceed and do an independent review of the cleanup and more of a deeper dive, as Eric mentioned, then we are asking to go out for a consultant that has not reviewed the site before.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I though am still unclear on how the duplicity of positions and positions that are doing or having responsibility for the same duties simplifies things. It might actually make things more complicated unless they understand better than I do how you're separating those duties. Why not combine the compliance officer and the outside consultant?
We can definitely do that if that's what you want to do. But what we're asking today, and Ken can jump on this too, is either we're dissolving the CAG and going with an independent review or we're, that's the question on the table. It doesn't have anything to do with the compliance manager. That's going to be who's managing the site. Does that make sense, Counselor Barrerman?
I'm still sensing quite a bit of duplicity there, which is.
If I could, Counselor.
Go ahead.
Ken Leder, Public Works Director. What the intent is, is to have someone internal on staff, that's the project position, who would manage these contracts, the RFP for the five-year review, as well as the independent consultant for the deeper dive review. And in my experience, if we rely on an outside consultant to do those management pieces for our consultant contracts, that's not going to get us where we need to be as far as oversight on those functions. That's the difference that I see is that we would have someone internal, even though it's a project position and limited turn, to oversee the consultant contracts, actions.
Thank you.
Hey, I have a, I have a comment. I see some issues with having an outside consultant get involved because as complex as this whole thing is, and I know that Chairman Mebedi has made some comments saying that he may be dead by the time any of this is resolved, that person would have to go and find all this historical data when we already have people on staff that know all the background that have been going, you know, along with this. My other question is, is this, is it an ecology requirement for these reviews to be done? Eric or Priya, I don't know if you can, either of you can answer that? The compliancy portion of it?
Yes, thank you for that question. Yes, it is a, per our consent decree, it is a requirement by ecology to do a periodic review on sites that have institutional controls or have been in the process of being mitigated or have been mitigated.
Okay, thank you. I just see some more complications personally, in my opinion, with these, with a consultant, an outside consultant getting involved. That's all I have. And other counselors?
I have a few comments. I think, I think this just seems like a tangled mess at this point. And a significant thing that was mentioned is the need to build trust because I think there's a lot of distrust in the community right now related to Camp Bonneville. And I think people cared deeply about Camp Bonneville and would like to see it open to the public at some point. But I don't think we can reasonably move forward until we clarify the level of cleanup, if the cleanup has been adequate. Now, we thought in setting up this committee that that could just be focused on the cleanup if those efforts had been adequate, that that would be the way to go. And it sounds as though there's other issues that have entered into that. And I think really we need to go back to the beginning and clarify what has happened, what we can do on that site, compliance issues. There's been councils that have come and gone, staff that have come and gone. I think we really need to take a big step back so that everyone clearly understands where things stand. And that I think having FAQ and people being able to see what's going on and interact with that would be good. I think it, I'm not sure if the committee that was set up had really the expertise to evaluate the level of cleanup and whether or not it was adequate. If it was, you know, community members, and I appreciate you all have been very much involved with this all along and have a lot at stake in this. So it may, I still see a lot of value in having that public engagement active piece of this that can coincide with how this moves forward. I think an independent review is critically needed so there it can set it apart from any personal grudges anybody may have, or somebody told me this and I think it's that. I think an independent review is a critical component to this. So I appreciate that suggestion. But I do think this council and the public need to fully understand and as much as we can agree upon what the facts are. Because that cleanup, we just can't move forward until that gets settled and the public feels confident in the information that they're being given.
If I can, just really quick, counsel. Counselor Marshall, and all of you, I appreciate your comments. So just as a reminder, you know, I actually was the one that suggested this community advisory group to do the review of the cleanup because I did have a lot of respect for some of our community members who have a lot of knowledge on Camp Bonneville. That group unfortunately hasn't gone very well. And it was due, I mean, we've had people leave because of it. We've had people who have brought forward that they're going to leave because of it. Because the specific narrow focus of the cleanup kept veering off in different directions. And so that focus was not being held to. So we all need to have this cleaned up correctly. So I do support moving forward. I mean, and we can talk about whether or not we need to have a project manager overseeing it versus the same consultant. But we need to move forward to make sure that we're getting the cleanup done. And I think we need to move forward with an independent, not somebody who's been intimately involved with it because I, there's a lot of passion, rightfully so. But there's, there's all the stuff that gets brought into that's outside the cleanup. What's it going to be when it's done? You know, we want to close it, we want to park, we want, you know, there's a lot of stuff that the community has a lot of interest. And there will be public processes where council can hear the community's interest. I also think there will be an opportunity for the community to see the outcome of the cleanup review when it's brought back to council to share that information. So, and I know our legal team is reviewing, we've had staff turnover. So while some might have a lot of history, not everybody does in the county. So we have another attorney looking at this who has not been with the county very long to do like the legal review like on use of outside cleanup. We got, but my recommendation is, is that we move forward with the outside expertise, people who have expertise in doing this type of review on the cleanup specifically to make sure that we're in compliance and that then we can move to the next step of, okay, what are we going to do with this property once it's done? It, it's frustrating. I can tell you right now, I'm frustrated too. I wish this was done six, seven years ago, whenever it was, I get it. But when we keep getting thrown all these little grenades, no pun intended, about all this other stuff that's not about cleanup, then we lose that focus. And we can't lose that focus unless council wants to say, you know what? We don't want to, I mean, there are some things we have to do legally, but you could say, you know, we're done with it. Let's just walk away, close the gates, we're done. That is an option. I don't think that's the option that I've heard from council. But all these, like I said, little grenades coming forward is diverting the focus of the cleanup. Comments from council?
Yes, Chair, just.
Go ahead, Glenn.
Go ahead, Gary.
I'll go last.
Okay, just a couple of comments and then a quick question. I remember a year ago, Eric gave me a tour of Camp Bonneville. And I remember at that time, learning that he had other things that he had to attend to. And I remember just being overwhelmed and being like, this is, this is a huge job. I don't, I felt like it was not enough support for Camp Bonneville. I think this, you can kind of compare it to the railroad. It's a big thing that nobody and staff has expertise on, and we're trying to contend with this issue. And at the same time, we have this real pressure with a lack of resources to fund extra staff and extra consultation firms to help us through this process. And sometimes it's turnaround and it's bit us in the rear. And I think this is one of those times where we didn't allocate enough resources that really were needed. So with that having been said, I'm definitely supportive of adding more support to this to make sure that this product, project moves forward, that people's concerns are properly handled and addressed. I would love to see all of the things that were brought up in the council meeting by the public answered on that question and answers page. And so I'm supportive of bringing in some help. I think I would like to understand a little bit more about the relationship between, you know, the hired person and the consulting firm. But my last thing is, and it's kind of a question, so there, and to add to Sue's comments, there is a lot of distrust right now. And so one of my questions is, and I think it's a valiant effort to bring an independent contractor in, how can we assure the public that it is a contract held by us? How can we assure them that we are not interjecting and that we're getting a true objective, independent opinion?
I'm going to start off first. One is during the selection process, they're going to have specific areas of expertise. And I'm not sure, Counselor Young, what you were referring to with regards to allocation of resources. Because we had people ready to do this. And in my opinion, and the mistrust, I agree, it's out there. But it's because of these, those grenades that keep getting thrown around where it's one little piece of information and not necessarily all the information. And so that's our job as the staff to ensure like those FAQs are updated, to make sure that the totality of information is being shared and shared correctly. But because when I'm seeing stuff come in and it's like a sentence out of three pages that you can't see the other three pages, that, that's a lack of information, it's created. And so I think we all, including the community members, have an obligation to ensure that we're not trying to mislead or get to an endpoint with that in mind. It should all be for the same reason, that we're doing things for the right reasons. So our job as staff is we'll get those, we've heard the questions, we're going to update those FAQs. But I would also ask the community to also do that and assume, and the CAG, the CAG report, you say this, assume positive intentions instead of sending something out and say, look, you can't do this, is what it said. And that was 20 years ago. And then we're now spending a lot of resources trying to figure out what happened. It's like, let's assume positive intentions and ask good questions instead of assuming negative intentions on the staff's part because I guarantee you, the staff's doing the best they can right now. Try and, we have, the allocation of resources have been completely misplaced at this point because we are trying to put out little fires everywhere rather than actually looking at it in its totality.
Thank you, Kathleen. Chairman Mebedi?
Thank you. Some of this did cast me by surprise today. I thought we were going to address the FBI contract. And I'm, it's not just an FBI contract, it's a law enforcement contract. So I guess I missed that we were still in negotiations, I accept that. I just want to make some random comments and observations. And to some of the points Kathleen just made and Glenn just made, you know, I think it was a good idea to have, once again, another committee set up to try to look at whether or not all the cleanup documentation was in place. Over the years, over the many years, over the many millions of dollars, there have been outside consultants coming and starting fresh. Some of them were the same and got renewed contracts, some were new. Some hired subcontractors to clean up Camp Bonneville. That process, we were told was complete back in 2019. And I'm not going to refer to it as hand grenades, but some of the misinformation that's out there is just amplified amongst what I consider a pretty small group. These over-the-top exaggerations of what's happening or could happen at Camp Bonneville. There have been no fires, as far as I know, started by the range. Period. There's no new pollution being dumped there by the FBI or law enforcement that I'm aware of, that any operating range within the United States, either transitioning to frangible ammunition or other leaded ammunition. It's not leaching out and polluting our water and our ecosystem. There is no plume, as far as I know. We, you know, many, many years ago, that toxic dump that was there for decades was cleaned up, completely removed. And it's constantly, to this day, being monitored as well as wells along Lackamas Creek. Unless I've been misled, there has been no creep on any of that leaching. They're still getting positive results and we have a consultant doing all the testing and keeping on top of it. But there's no plume moving from there. As far as I know, I have heard of no explosion accidentally occurring there. No one's been hurt, no wildlife has been injured, and we do have large elk herds out there. You know, all of this danger has been greatly exaggerated. And I also feel that the FBI has been kind of attacked here. They are a federal law enforcement force within the United States. They're not Oregon's FBI. I saw that as somewhat of a pejorative reference somehow criticizing Oregon. And law enforcement uses and needs this range. There's been no danger going back and forth. The range is in really good shape. Can it be in better shape? Yes. But the upshot of all this discussion is, you know, number one, I thought Amber was going to be our brand-new stucky for leading the charge here on trying to put all of this to move forward so we can actually get to the next step where the greater community can actually enjoy the beauty of Camp Bonneville, whether it's the equestrian community or hikers that would could actually start using it for the betterment and enjoyment of all within the county and the region, for that matter. So now I'm hearing that we want to put another consultant instead in that place who will be a new employee. So I think overall, the comment is, maybe we just don't have the capacity to do it on our own. I get that. But it is disappointing to watch this process wax and wane over my last six years with virtually no forward progress. So anyway, I would be in favor of getting a consultant. I don't, and to the questions that were just asked, what their role will be, how they be trusted because we've had so many consultants over the last 20 years, since the conveyance was conveyed, that had done that every year in the renewal of their contracts, taking a fresh look at what needs to be cleaned up, what hasn't been cleaned up, what still needs to be cleaned up, to what depth, what areas do we need to just fence off? That's been done over and over and over again. I see no end. I see no end to this. If we're going to hire a consultant, and I'm generally against hiring consultants, let's keep it within the timber sale budget that we can harvest out of Camp Bonneville by our professional forester. I think at least there's no complaint about the job he's doing, other than the fact we don't have a fire break in place, and we should move towards that. So it's just, we need to make some progress here. We need to stop the exaggeration. We need to stop the misrepresentation, and we need to move forward. I, I look forward to seeing this law enforcement contract in place. It's a valuable asset, and it's one that has existed out there for a very long time. And, you know, there was one person at one point in the BRAC process that said, geez, it maybe should be in a different location. They didn't say to close it down and move it out of Camp Bonneville. I mean, that was a misrepresentation, an overstatement. So in any case, those are my thoughts. You know, I, I'm heartened by the staff looking for the next way ahead. I'm just hopeful that we actually press forward with it and make some progress.
Thank you, Chair.
Go ahead, Counselor Berman.
Yes, thank you. I would like to have a singular focus, not talking about FBI or anything else. I want to talk about the cleanup. If CAG was formed for the purpose of assessing cleanup, then let's have them do it. But let's have them with a chair, hopefully from among their own, who knows how to keep a group of people on task and on target. So as soon as something is mentioned, that is another topic, here or there or anywhere, out of order, back to the agenda. And the agenda is solely on the cleanup for that group at that time. I, if there is someone who comes close to having that ability, to have a strong hand to keep people on task, great. And they could get a modicum of training to help them be able to do that. I think that that is the way to go forward that would engender trust. Have it done from within. Have it done by, by the group that was charged with that so long ago. And, you know, I'm sure that any of us counselors, if there's anything that we could do to help in that regard, outside of the meeting per se, to help that chair be able to pull ahead with that singular agenda item and get it done, I'm sure we would be happy to do that. I know that I would. So anyway, that's my suggestion. There are good consultants out there, there are terrible consultants out there. We know the capabilities of those people who are on the CAG. And let's choose, or have them choose, not us, them choose the one that they trust to keep them on an agenda that they have approved that deals only with cleanup.
Counselor, thank you, Counselor Berman. So are you proposing appointing a CAG chair and then a complacency consultant? Or no consultants and a CAG chair only?
I'm thinking that the CAG chair should be chosen among, by the CAG, among the CAG, with the emphasis on what their job description is. I think we could provide the job description for them and reaffirm what the mission is for them. And for right now, let's hold off on a consultant. And I don't know about that compliance officer. Maybe, maybe that person needs to be in place since it's a three-year position. I don't, I don't have an opinion on that. I'm just looking at getting that cleanup task done.
Thank you, Counselor Berman. Is there any other comments?
If I could weigh in, I, I don't know if you're seeing my, my name light up. I'm not raising my hand, but. So just focusing on this issue, number one, maybe staff can answer this if they know. I mean, I was told years ago, we were told years ago as a counsel, that Department of Ecology was going to sign off on all the work that had been done by the independent contractors who are professional at doing this cleanup under BRAC. So that's my first question. And then related to that is, are there BRAC cleanups around the country? In fact, outside of our territorial limits, we've done BRAC cleanups. How do they get it signed off? You know, what, what's the process? Who actually signs it off? I'm, I'm sure people have not had the trouble we've had in getting all the work and all the millions of dollars spent accounted for and approved. And I mean, it's, it's fundamentally contract administration, which we obviously are challenged on and have been over the years. And this is just one more example of it. So anyway, what does he, what's our state's relationship to the approval process, if any? And if we know, how do other BRAC projects get signed off on as mission complete?
Do you want to take that one? And then when, Chair, when Eric finishes your com, or your questions, I want to go back to Counselor Berman's comments, because I would like to add something to that.
Right, thank you.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that question. Yes, so to answer your question, the Washington State Department of Ecology signs off on all cleanup actions at Camp Bonneville. It is my understanding that all the munitions of concern cleanup is done. The focus currently right now is on the groundwater monitoring. So I don't know if that, that answers your, your question directly.
So I think you just said that the State Department of Ecology has that responsibility and has signed off, other than this continuing monitoring that's going on for the toxic dump.
Yes, Counselor, that is correct. The Washington State Department of Ecology has signed off on all the MEC munitions of concern, and our focus now is on the groundwater monitoring.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amber.
Chair, if I can go back to Counselor Berman's comments. And I think Counselor Marshall hit it on the head is, even though the CAG was reviewing, it's, that's not the technical expertise on staff nor in that group for this review. And I think also too, it lends to Kathleen's comments of, an independent review that has not looked at Camp Bonneville before, there isn't a bias that's built into that. And I think to get a clean slate moving forward, I disagree that, I think that there needs to be an independent review, and I don't think that can be accomplished. And Kathleen, if you can weigh in on her, and I attended most of the CAG meetings, and I don't think that that's a path forward.
I, I'm just sorry, I'm still thinking about what Eric just said. Because I think we were doing this cleanup review because the community didn't trust Ecology's decision, which is why I think we started going down this path. So, I mean, that is another option. You can say, okay, Ecology said we're done, we're done, other than the water cleanup. I, I would want more information from staff before we make that final decision today, but that is an interesting comment. But going back to Counselor Berman, I, I will say from my experience on the CAG, trying to, I, as kindly as I could, and I'm sure I was, I get more direct over and over, trying to refocus the group, exactly what you said, like the chair would do, which is, let's come back to this narrow focus. And that's exactly what I emailed, that's exactly what I've communicated. But unfortunately, it kept, there was a bigger focus at the table. And because of that, and because of that dialogue of trying to continue with that narrow focus, we lost people. And we're going, if we were to go back, I don't know how many people, I think we're probably going to have two or three people that are still on the CAG, because of the, how the information was shared and the questions being answered. I'm sorry, am I hearing something in the room?
Yes, you're hearing Mr. Shaw, Mr. Shaw, please. Go ahead, continue, Kathleen. Mr. Shaw.
Yeah, so they're not liking what I say. And I have, I can tell you, I have the utmost respect for him. Him and I have had a lot of good dialogue. He's one of the reasons, because of our discussion of why we're doing this. And I hate the fact that we're having to pivot or requesting to pivot. But I still have the end goal in mind that Mr. Shaw and myself have, which is to ensure it's done correctly. So I do have concerns that we're not, we're going to have two or three members on CAG. And I, I do have concerns that the narrow focus will continue, because I had a hard time trying to bring them back in. Staff did their best, because it kept sprawling out to a, a lot more concerns and issues that were brought up, which may be, you know, important information that we need to look into, but that's not the narrow focus. And so it was, it was a big struggle, which is why I actually stopped meetings early, because it was not being productive. But like I said, maybe we need to go back and talk to Eric and Ecology, and I know that's not going to be a popular answer with folks in the room. But if the cleanup's done and we're just doing monitoring, maybe, maybe we're done.
Thank you, Kathleen. So I think what I'm going to do is I'm going to make a motion to appoint a CAG chair, pause potential consultants until we can have further clarification from Eric.
I would not even make a motion about CAG right now. Let us get clarification from Eric.
Okay.
Honestly, I don't know who you're going to have left on CAG outside of Mr. and Mrs. Shaw.
Okay.
Maybe one other person, I don't know. So I would recommend allowing staff to go back, confirm what Eric said, make sure we're not missing anything, and then we can bring that back to council and say, yes, you know, we've hit our requirements, Ecology says we've hit our requirements, we're going to do the monitoring, and we don't need to do a review.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion for Eric to go back to Ecology and recheck, reconfirm that information to go forward. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Any discussion? I think we've had plenty.
I, I'd like to say something. I, I appreciated Counselor Berman's suggestion. I believe there are at least four members of the committee that are in, I, I don't know what the total number of committee members are, but four of them, there's six. So four out of six are here in the room today. And I think if there is any, any possibility that they could continue to function in some way, that would be helpful. And I do think we still need that independent review consultant, because the trust has been strained just so much. And I think that there's been some fundamental questions raised apart from the cleanup that need to have just some direct answers. And I haven't heard those answers, just, you know, fundamentally, what are the uses that are allowed? I'm not sure what the answer to that is. And that, if we're making decisions in the future about shooting range, we need that information. So again, if we can focus on the cleanup, answer some of the fundamental questions that have been raised, so we can all move forward together.
So I, I think the existing committee is done. Their work is done. Thank them. Let's move on. And as to Sue's question, you know, none of us are acting as lawyers, although some of us have been. We've had all these questions to our lawyers, the prosecuting attorney's office, some of the, which has gone back to the Department of the Army for clarification. I know of no variance, one that I was involved in was the idea of getting a veterans home that was promoted by the mayor and others out, out there. And that was sent up the flagpole, and basically the Department of the Army said no. The other request was for an expansion on the Veterans Cemetery. There's a cemetery there. And they wanted the ability to expand from the Portland's National Cemetery. The Department of the Army came back and said, no. So I, I don't know, you know, we could keep asking these questions over and over again, and keep getting the answers over and over again. But we do need to move forward. So I support the last motion to move forward. I do not support keeping what has amounted to a number of advocates, not a collaborative, narrow-based committee to answer the simple question, is the paperwork in order? Is the cleanup done? So let's go back to Ecology, let's get those answers. If we, if we want to dredge up the, all the prior briefings on what are allowable sources, because I can tell you, Congress does change that from time to time. Some of the rules under BRAC change. But a natural, a conservation conveyance under BRAC has wide, a wide array of definitions that are allowed. So in any case, I, I would like to move forward. I don't think we, if there's more discussion, fine, but I'm ready to vote on the motion.
All right.
Should the motion be restated?
Restated in, in what way, Counselor Marshall?
What is the motion?
The motion was for Eric to go back to Ecology and see if the remediation was complete or not. And then revisit with the council to see how we're going to move forward.
And I would just also say, even with that motion, that doesn't mean we're not going to look at questions that are coming forward and updating FAQs, so that, that piece does not get lost in this process.
Correct. And so that's the motion. I believe I had a second on that.
You did.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nay? All right.
I'll, I'll go along with it, but I think it's a limited response.
And that's okay, in my opinion. Just to comment on that, I think issues need to be taken one by one by one, so that as we go through the process, each question is answered clearly, end of that question, and then the group moves on. So it should be limited.
Thank you, Counselor Berman, I appreciate that. It's like eating one little piece of an elephant. I recently learned, I'm talking about legislation, take the tail, go to the next part. So more to come, Counselor Marshall, that wasn't, it's, we still need to get some answers.
Chair, just clarification. It appears that the motion was successful. So now at this point, we've instructed Eric to go back to Ecology and do some research there. Where are we at now in terms of kind of what we started with, which was the recommendation from staff on getting some outside help?
I would suggest we pause on that.
The independent review is a pause until, yeah.
Yes.
And is that a pause on the?
The only thing that we're not pausing on is still hearing the questions coming forward and doing our due diligence in reviewing documentation and get those up on FAQs. That's the only piece we're not pausing on. But everything else, we're not hiring a consultant, we're not doing anything at this point, other than the five-year review and that piece, I'll have to ask staff about, because that is a mandatory process.
And as far as the status of the committee, where's that at?
I think that will be talked about when we come back from Ecology. That's from what I understood.
Yes, it will continue to be paused, because if Ecology confirms that there's no further cleanup review needed, then there would be no need for that committee to review it.
Counselor, sorry.
No, go ahead.
This is Ken. Could I direct you back to item two? And I would like some clarification, because we do have a mandated five-year review that's already been delayed. We have written that scope, and we're ready to publish that. And I would like direction, our assumption is that we should continue with that.
Yes. And, and Ken, from, from my perspective, of course, counsel, this, if we were not talking about.
about the second issue, your staff would have already proceeded in that direction because it's within your budget. It's, it's mandatory. So that's, it, yeah, so I don't think that that is open for consideration today. I think it needs to move forward as you would have.
Question, if you can, please.
Yes ma'am.
Does that RFP ask for the designation of a consultant to take us through the mandated periodic review process?
Councillor Berman, can you repeat that question? I'm sorry, just cut out.
What is that RFP asking for? Is it for a consultant to be hired to take us through that mandated periodic review process?
Yes councillor, so the, the, the mandated five-year periodic review will be contracted to a consultant, um, to, to answer those questions for us.
Well. Okay. I guess I'm back to that compliance manager. It sounds like that could be the same person.
If we had that person on staff right now councillor Berman, we could consider it, but we did not have that technical expertise with the five-year review plan per the mandate.
Excuse me, that's the RFP as I understand it.
Correct.
We don't have that consultant yet either. They will be found by the RFP. And so that's what I'm suggesting. I just do not understand.
It's a large scope of work.
The replication of additional positions. I think that confuses the issue.
The RFP for the five-year mandate, we would have put out already. So that's something that we would do internally. So that one is, is going, if we have to hold on something, it would be the compliance manager because the five-year review, we're already two years behind on. So we need to get that out.
So, so in the normal course of events, it's either within budget capacity, within the department, that's already there, or it'll come back to us as part of a supplementary budget item. I don't know how much of a consultant, uh, RFP amount we're looking at, or it would go into a normal budget year. Um, so is that true? We'll, we'll hear more about a budget impact and have to approve it if it isn't within Ken later's, uh, existing budget capacity.
Ken can speak to that.
Yeah, I, I apologize councillor. I, it looks to me like this is an already an adopted budget, um, and was an executive, uh, function that we're moving forward with. And I, I should not oppose the question to council.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you for that clarification, Ken, because I, I thought I heard you said it was already budgeted for, at the, your initial comment.
Yep. And I'm doing my best to come up to speed on all this and I apologize for taking up more time with that question.
No worries. Thank you so much.
Thank you Chair. I think we have our direction. So if we, we'll conclude that topic and we'll move forward with the direction council's given.
All right. Thank you Amber, I appreciate it. All right, moving on to item 4.3 proclamation, ride transit month. Jordan, I believe will provide the update on this.
Yes, he's on, it looks like he's on his way.
Yes, hello councillor, for the record, Jordan Bogie, policy analyst. So bringing this back to you, uh, last week at council time, we discussed a, a previous draft version of this proclamation, uh, and there was a request, uh, to add in a line, uh, discussing, uh, the appreciation and support that, uh, the county council has for transit employees and also, um, you know, i- in light of the recruitment issues that the Ctran has, has had and some of their staffing challenges that, that we reflect that in this proclamation. And so you'll see in the second to last, whereas, uh, I've added a line about that. Um, so would be looking today, um, for a, uh, thumbs up or, um, any different comments or edits, uh, from council for this version of the proclamation.
Good job.
Any comments from the council? All right, is there thumbs up to move it to the next council meeting?
Yep.
Looks to be unanimous. Thank you Jordan for that update. All right, moving on to new business, item 5.1 proclamation, Jack Tilly. Jordan, I believe you're also providing update on this?
Yes, thank you councillor, I'll be presenting this one as well. Uh, so this one came to us, uh, through the chair via the Fort Vancouver High School class of 1966. They are getting ready to, uh, have a celebration a little bit later this summer, um, for the class. And, uh, one of their members is Jack Tilly, who, um, su- served in a variety of military leadership positions and was the 12th Sergeant Major of the US Army. And so, uh, we received this request, um, to honor Sergeant Major Tilly, uh, and his, uh, service, uh, both in the army as well as his work afterwards, uh, including, um, as CEO of his own company and, uh, working with veterans and helping them access employment opportunities following their service. And so, uh, have, have written a proclamation to that effect. Um, and so would be looking to see if council is supportive of moving this forward.
Are there any questions from the council on this?
I'd just like to add a point of emphasis for those, uh, non-veterans, uh, that are here. Uh, you know, a lot of people know very famous commanding generals and chief of staff of the army. Not as many people understand what a big deal this guy is. You know, he was the right-hand man to the chief of staff of the army for a good number of years. Our service overlapped, I always knew the name. I, I was at events that he was at, including, uh, the termination of ground operations in Iraq. Um, this is a big deal. I had no idea he was a local, uh, local product from one of our local high schools. So they want to honor him and he is beyond his, uh, retirement, he has continued to champion veterans. Uh, he has done so much nationally for veterans. So he is a, he is, uh, we should be very proud of him, uh, being a local product of our high schools. And I'm hoping, and I appreciate Jordan's jumping on this so quickly, uh, to get this done.
Thank you councillor. I'm supportive as well. I think there's a thumbs up to put this on the next council meeting. All right, it's unanimous. Thank you Jordan for that update. Moving on to item 5.2, the WASCAC meeting for June 26.
Hi councillor, this is Kristen. Um, on June 26, WASCAC is holding a general membership meeting. And at the meeting, they're going to be going over all of their changes in the bylaws. And that includes board composition, voting procedures and due structures. So it's a very informative meeting and all councillors and members throughout the whole organization are invited. It does conflict with council time that day. So I guess our question for you is, would you like to have councillor Young go as the WASCAC representative? Or we can talk about cancelling council time on the 26th and having all the council attend the meeting? And it is, I know it's virtual, I don't know if there's an in-person option, but you at least can log in virtually.
I, I have a comment on this Kristen, since I was at the legislative meeting last week. There's a lot of changes coming up, um, and there's leadership changes and there's been some county changes. Personally, I would prefer that all council be in attendance of it, regardless of its virtual or not. Um, that's my opinion. Council?
Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, I think it is, this is important. And I think at a minimum, one of us should be present. Uh, there have been a lot of changes and one of those changes is that King County has withdrawn from WASCAC. And I, I mentioned that, I think on several occasions, kind of how that transpired, there was frustration about them paying a larger amount of dues, but only having one vote, which is really an equitable system, really was. So I think it is important for us to have this discussion or to be in, involved in that discussion and, and how the, the due structures are formed in the future, because it could impact our dues.
Other council comment?
I'd be open to rescheduling or cancelling council time and we could all attend.
I, I agree, agree with Sue and, uh, Michelle. I, you know, like we did for Lackamasay Lake Symposium, which I think is of equal importance. This is, uh, this is a possibility for our council to, um, shine, uh, for us to get a little bit more prominence within the WASCAC, uh, community. So I think we should look at rescheduling and all of us attending if we, if everyone agrees.
All right, I, I will motion for council time to be canceled for that day so that all Clark County council can attend the June 26 WASCAC meeting. Is there? Thank you for the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you councillor.
Thank you.
Right, moving on to item 5.2, bridge shelter. Kathleen will provide an update on this?
Yeah, so, um, thank you, and the letter is up. So Eric Holmes from the city of Vancouver reached out to see if the county was willing to use mental health sales tax to cover a portion of a bridge shelter that they're working on. Um, more specifically, they are asking, um, for an initial capital investment projection. They're projecting the, the whole capital, um, initially the dollar amount is 16 million. And they're asking the council to, the county to pay 30% or 6 million or not to exceed 6 million. Um, and then furthermore, the operations and maintenance is estimated at six and a half million the first year. Of course, that will increase over time due to inflation and they're asking the county to contribute 30% of the cost over 10 years. Um, so there are, I do have, um, Michael Torres, I believe is in the room. Emily is here from Budget, um, and we might have DeeDee on as well from DCS. Um, but we do, as you know, we do have an annual, um, process with mental health sales tax request. Uh, we do have, I believe, an estimated mental health sales tax six-year forecast. Um, it is my understanding at the last meeting and councillor Mebagey and Young can correct me if I was told incorrectly, but there were some suggestions during that process or, um, thoughts of being very intentional for reaching out to those in the community that might benefit from mental health sales tax, that it's recommended to not commit more than three years, because this is of all toll fund, just because it's sales tax. Um, and, and I know, I have heard at least from some community members that there has, has been some work already done in getting information out in the public. Um, I know DCS is looking at options as well on, um, transitional, potential transitional places for those who are leaving the jail. Um, and if there's questions on that, I know Michael can answer that. And I would also say Jordan should be there as well. He's helping to manage this process for us this year. Um, and we also have jail needs. So there are a lot of, while we have a good fund balance right now and it really stalled out over COVID in trying to spend that money down, um, based on what I'm hearing from our staff is, we're going to be really intentional in using these, uh, funds in the near future. So for council today, in the Eric's letter, he did, um, put a link to their work session that they had where they discussed this. Uh, so for council today, you can, you've got a few options. Of course, you can, um, ask questions of the staff. Um, I do believe that there are some, uh, from the city of Vancouver that might be in the room or online who are available to answer questions. But you can approve it, you can deny it, you could say, have it go back to the committee and follow the same process that everybody else does and going through the RFP process. Um, but what, any thoughts or questions right now?
Um, councillor?
Michelle, I have some introductory comments I'd like to make on this one.
Go ahead Gary.
So, and I, I kind of, right out front, I would kind of stand behind what, uh, one of the options, which is to put it in the normal mix. Uh, because I think, you know, I've been really pushing every opportunity I can to get people to start submitting for RFPs, uh, against this mental health sales tax fund. I mean, we have roughly 20 million there. We can probably comfortably spend about 15 million. Uh, we don't have a specific fund balance issue, but we always have to worry about that. Now, there's two big moving pieces that are somewhat changes that are in progress, or three rather. Uh, one is, we discussed at the mental health sales tax, a, a new, what I'll call a block grant. And we didn't set on an amount that, uh, the council would have to approve, but basically I'm just going to notionally say about five or 10 million dollars to go to our community services with guidelines on how to spend it. And then community services would get that money quickly out through an RFP process. Uh, the normal process would be to come before the committee as usual. Uh, one of the current initiatives is our jail, jail services. That to me is one of our, uh, first priorities. And it's not a matter of providing in custody services, it's about providing services while in custody, while out of custody as part of the court process. Uh, the, another initiative is with our schools. And we just met with some of the superintendences schools, they are losing state money. Uh, they had about 30 council, school councillors, I'm not talking about vocational councillors, I'm talking about therapists. Uh, they're having the funding pulled by the state and that was woefully understaffed. So, uh, we're hopeful that the schools will provide one request, uh, or pro- proposal on how to address mental health within our schools. You know, uh, they have a dire need. So I, I think there's a real possibility, if all of this is moving forward, uh, that we could possibly exceed a budget capacity, uh, of that fund. So I want to put it in a normal process before the, the whole committee, uh, the mental health sales tax committee. I just think that's the most prudent thing to do and we can sort through all the details. Uh, the other thing I would mention is, we don't know when the Supreme Court is going to render its decision on the Bend and Boise progeny. And that may change some rules, some ground rules on what municipality, municipalities can and cannot do. Uh, so I, I'm hoping that we can do this. I, I want to say at the, as I end, that I absolutely support this initiative. I have from the very beginning of it and I applaud Michael Lynch for standing behind it over all these years. Um, we, we could have used one years ago. Uh, there are other communities that have successfully used them. Uh, so I fully support the concept. I just wish there was a model where the county through community services can make these services available to the greater community, including the homeless community, not just passing money from, from our sales tax fund to Vancouver to use for their initiative. Uh, I would rather, uh, that we had an overarching program, uh, supported by the county, uh, that provided services to the greater community. So I'll, with that, I'll pause.
Thank you Gary. Uh, other comments from the council?
Yes Chair, I have a couple of questions. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm just to that last point that councillor Mebagey made, would these services be available to anyone in the county would be able to access this service?
Kathleen, would you, Chair, would you like me to have Jamie Spinelli from the city come up? She could probably answer those questions.
Yes, that would be great, thank you.
Thank you Jamie.
It work now? Okay. Good afternoon councillor. Um, uh, yes, the, the proposal for this would be that this is available to anyone in Clark County. Um, and to, uh, um, to councillor Mebagey's point, um, the goal here, and I've, and I've spoken with, um, the jail previously, the goal here would also be to kind of fill that gap between jail release, um, and, you know, where folks end up currently, which is either motel for a few days or just back out onto the street. So that, the, the hope here is that we can create these direct connections between the jail and shelter, law enforcement and shelter, to provide tools so that we're catching all those folks directly. and shelter, to provide tools so that we're catching all those folks directly. And it would be available county-wide.
And, you know, what is the timeline for the next grant round through our normal processes?
Emily, do you want to touch on that? Or Jordan? Jordan, you want to come up? Jordan's coming up, Chair.
Good afternoon, this is Jordan Bogey again, for the record. So the timeline that we typically go through is the RFP is released mid to late June, and I think we're still anticipating that, with RFP applications due in August, with the selection process happening through September and then into early October so that it is ready to go through the normal budget cycle. So all of that is anticipated for the 2025 budget. So we would ask that anyone that's applying for mental health sales tax funding through the usual RFP is going to be submitting that by August.
Great. And how does that coincide with the timeframe that you have? Would that work for your purposes if it went through that normal process that we have?
So ideally, we would be doing this more rapidly because it does require property acquisition, which, you know, is kind of an ongoing process. Certainly, if it was required, we would do it.
Okay.
This is Kathleen. I can share. Eric had mentioned that he wanted to bring it back in front of his council the first part of June.
Yeah.
Can I?
Would it jeopardize any potential acquisition? Yes. Oh, it could possibly jeopardize an acquisition.
Counselor Mevage?
Yeah, thank you. So, you know, although I have stated my preference was to put it in the normal process through the entire committee, which would be that June cycle that Jordan just mentioned, if the council does agree on this other initiative to give community services, and again, I'm just notionally saying 5 million or 10 million dollars to put out into the community, we could, because that would be more responsive, it would be more agile. Perhaps the city's requests could go working with our community services and getting that accomplished. I'm heartened to hear that it would be overarching. Jamie, thank you, and that's exactly aligned with what I was hoping to see in our community. Anyway, so there could be that option, and then that would not be on such a strict, it wouldn't be until June. If we can approve that process within, as a sub-working group, basically, of the mental health sales tax committee, that money could be allocated much more quickly. That was the whole intent of allocating a block to community services.
Your council comments, questions?
Yes, just a question and probably some comments, but, you know, we've been talking about this fund for quite some time because we did have a large balance in it, and we've heard from community services, we've heard from different directions, to expect an increase in requests for this funding, which is a good thing. It's a great thing that we're going to be getting it out there. So my question would be, what would set this program apart from other potential RFPs? Why should we move forward with this? What does it accomplish?
So I would say, I mean, certainly, there are a variety of services that could be funded with the mental health sales tax. I know Counselor Mevage just mentioned schools, and I'm certainly not attempting to pit any one need over, you know, or against another. I can speak directly to homelessness, unsheltered specifically, and what I can say is that there are many great organizations and programs doing great work. And I spend a great deal of time with direct service providers, as well as in observation of service provision out in our community. And what I am both seeing and hearing from service providers is that they're, you know, given some of the unique challenges of folks living outdoors, the services that they are trying to provide are either just not as effective, they're not as engaged in, because people are attempting to meet their most basic needs, one. People living outdoors have much more significant mental health issues than someone living indoors in many cases. And the same goes with substance use. And, I mean, there are a variety of challenges people present with, but all of those exacerbated by being outside versus inside. And so I would say that a shelter that can provide the services that we want to provide, which include mat services, like directly embedded in the project, as well as medical respite, which we are severely lacking. So to me, it seems more like the shelter provides the foundation for all of those other services, the supportive services, to kind of rest upon so that they can be more effectively provided and received and participated in.
Thank you. So my initial thoughts on this are a lot. One is, I was able to sit in that meeting that we had with jail services, and to me, there really is a gap, a big gap. I mean, that was one of the things that was really punctuated by our staff, was that people tend to get released from the jail late at night, on weekends. The paperwork doesn't get done during the day, it gets done at night when no one is able to capture these people falling, or not falling, but exiting from the jail. And this, to me, is a resource that is, that would be, it would fill a huge gap in the system, to be able to capture those people that have potentially been stabilizing in our jail, because we are focusing on a treatment focus rather than punishment, but help people improve their lives while they're in their jail. And then they don't just fall flat on their face when they exit the jail straight into homelessness. So I am supportive of this. And I also, on top of that, think that this is a great opportunity for us to have an entire community-led initiative. So to kind of crush this barrier that we've had between you guys are doing this and we're doing that, to work together, to have some good relationship-building opportunities. But the biggest thing is to help people that desperately need it. So I am supportive of this. And, you know, if it has to go through the process, I can deal with that. But I would hope, I understand also the property acquisition issue. You know, when you find a place, you need to lock it down, otherwise it might walk away. So certainly would be supportive of directly approving this to some degree. I don't know. I think we should go through some of the details in terms of the funding and get a report on exactly the health and what's available in the mental health sales tax budget. But I'm supportive of moving forward and making a commitment to the city to support this.
I have a comment. I'm also interested in the regular RFP process so that everyone has an equitable, you know, it's all equitable across the board. I understand that, you know, they would prefer going to their council. But I'm personally concerned how this would impact the county's existing homeless services and jail services, for that matter. It sounds like they can still meet the RFP, the regular RFP process. Am I correct in that? Minus the land acquisition portion, Jamie?
I mean, certainly, we can go through an RFP. It would just make it more challenging to acquire the property that we're looking at, like it might not exist anymore.
Got it. And then my other question is, because I know that the city passed Proposition 3 for the housing levy, is any of that, I mean, is it a shortfall with that money to acquire the property?
No, there's no shortfall with the dollars. This was kind of a couple of different things. I mean, one, obviously, the city's working on their own budgetary things. But we do have funding that we are committing to a bridge shelter. Our council has said it's their, it is their top priority. But really, this was largely in an effort to create this partnership, because we currently have, you know, as you all know, our safe state communities, for example, that are solely city-funded. And because of that, it is solely city residents who are experiencing homelessness that enter those sites. And this really was an effort to be able to wrap around and support the entire community because it would be co-funded so that we can have these partnerships between jail and shelter, and CCSO and shelter, and VPD and shelter, to kind of support everyone.
Chair, I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Counselor Marshall.
Thank you. Counselor said we mentioned in the last echo meeting when we were talking about the need for shelter for emergency weather or other kinds of catastrophic events that might happen, and mentioned this as a possibility to house some of those folks in those situations. Is that
Yes.
part of what is foreseen?
Yes, we're planning to have some flex space to provide, kind of up to double the typical capacity, which we're looking at 150 beds. So be able to provide as close to double of that as we could to add the severe weather shelter capacity.
Great. And I would just like to suggest maybe a way so that it wouldn't jeopardize property acquisition that you're interested in, if we make a decision on at least that initial six, up to 6 million for the acquisition, and then maybe the remainder, the ongoing provision of services could go through the RFP process, just as a compromise.
Counselor Belkut, can I ask a quick question also?
All right. Go ahead, Kathleen. I'd also like to hear from Emily, Vanessa, or Michael as well.
Yeah, so I have two quick questions. Jamie, did you just say that you have, the city actually has the funding for this project? Because I'm, the letter says the city's unable to cover all of these costs within the current and forecasted budget. So I just want to clarify that first.
Yeah, so we have not identified 100% of the dollars to support the project on an ongoing basis. But the city council has directed our city manager to find some supporting funds, while also saying this is a priority for us. It's not acceptable, that it's just not affordable because we're in a state of emergency. So we are attempting to pair some of our dollars with other dollars.
Okay. I thought I misunderstood that the purpose was, you know, to partner, which I think is great to partner with the county on any way that we can. But the letter did clearly say that the city is unable to cover all of the cost with the current and forecasted budget. And then my second question is, will this program be using the coordinated entry and HMIS system that we have?
We utilize HMIS with all of our programs. I'm certain that we could come up with some kind of a way to work with coordinated entry. But as I had mentioned, the goal here is to partner with the jail and law enforcement and potentially, like, treatment providers for direct access for entry. And going through coordinated entry, as coordinated entry exists today, would not allow for that. But potentially, we could come up with some kind of arrangement where, you know, it's more of a hybrid option.
So I think that, I think that's an important aspect from our perspective or from community services' perspective. I know Vanessa's not here, I know Michael Torres is. And I believe, just to clarify also, that from the discussion that we had with the jail staff, the gap that we had there was the transportation from the jail somewhere. That was the gap that we didn't have. Wasn't that accurate? I'll look at Amber, and Counselor Young was there.
Kathleen, I think, and Jamie, if you want to speak to this, it's wherever you chose the land acquisition, the transportation would be absolutely essential and necessary for that to be figured out before the person left the jail. And Jamie, if you want to summarize what you shared with us during that conversation regarding the transportation, I know that question's been asked of me, depending on where the shelter is located.
Sure, yeah. If this partnership is able to move forward, then we would make the accommodation for, we would figure out how to do the transportation, whether that's providing our own transportation with site staff, whether that's, I mean, purchasing a shuttle or a van or whatever. But we would certainly make the transportation happen if we've got the partnership in place.
Question?
Go ahead, Counselor.
So, Jamie, if you could just clarify a little bit more. So the money you're requesting on behalf of Vancouver is for the capital investment in the location, not just for mental health or drug addiction services? Is that correct?
So while I know that the city manager did put a request in there for the capital costs, which would be to purchase the property needed to provide the service, and then the ongoing operational dollars, well, a portion of the ongoing operational dollars, which certainly would include mental health and behavioral health services.
So I would kind of like to modify one of my comments before. I would like, first and foremost, for this to go through our RFP process with Vanessa and team, but through that, if the council agrees to some amount, to go to community services, and that this would be the first big project for them to digest. All the questions that are coming up here, and HMIS is a, that's a real big one, the transportation's another big one, obviously, could all be answered within an RFP, between the experts, with Michael and Vanessa. I don't want the county completely, because we have responsibility for the Homeless Action Plan, to be just funneling our money to Vancouver. I want to be a true partner. And I think the way we achieve that is not only through the funding partnership, but also through the collaboration through our community services. So I'd really like to see community services to kind of work together with Jamie and her team to knock out the details. I definitely am in favor of this. This is a good way to get this tax money that's already been collected, put to the best and highest use, and as quickly as possible.
Kathleen? Go ahead, Counselor Rattlerman.
I would just like to say to you, Jamie, that the more I hear about the content of the project from you, the more pleasing it is. I'm particularly happy to hear about the overarching nature of the service, which I frankly didn't pick up on before as something that was definitely included. But hearing that that is definitely included, I feel really good about that. However, and this is maybe to be seen as a downside, I don't know, but I do think that it should go through our regular RFP process. And the reasons for that are many, even if the amount being requested was half of what is being requested on an ongoing basis. I would still feel that way because that feels right as far as the appropriate way to disperse and dispense these funds. I mean, that is the mechanism that has been set up for it. It's a good one, and I think we should utilize that rather than council kind of usurping that process. And then the second question that deals with the initial capital costs being funded just off the top by council, I kind of feel the same way. If we were to give some blanket number, 2 million, 6 million, whatever the number, to our department to oversee, I don't think it should be earmarked for this program. Or again, we have usurped their process. They may or may not even have a process in place to distribute large sums for initial capital costs at this point. But if not, I would think that they would put that in place so that others that come along that also want the same thing would be considered fairly also. This is a great project. It probably will end up being the one that is funded, I don't know. But I think it should go through the regular processes. And therefore, I would support the RFP process initially, and unfortunately, now, not setting aside an earmarked capital. the RFP process initially, and unfortunately now, not setting aside an earmarked capital investment in this particular project. We could send money to the department to oversee of a particular amount, but I think not if it is earmarked by council.
Chair?
Thank you, Counselor Berman. Yes, go ahead, Counselor Young.
Yes, thank you. I, I would just like to remind the council that we already approved one outside of the normal RFP process, and so that's kind of what generated this initial discussion. With that being said, I just feel, and, and one other thing I would say too, is that the, the entire process is determined by the council. So we are able to change that at any moment, we are able to make modifications, we are ma, you know, able to make emergency or quick decisions like this as the council. And with that having been said, I think there is a tremendous community benefit to this. I would make a motion at this time that we do approve the capital expenses and send the operational expenses through the RFP process with the Mental Health Sales Tax Advisory Board.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
A question, it says in the letter from Mary Combs, not to exceed $6 million for that purpose. Is that a part of your motion?
Yes, and the capital, entire expense, if I'm correct, would be six to seven million. Am I correct on that?
The entirety of the capital, he's got estimated at 16 million.
Okay, gotcha, yeah.
The six to seven was the ongoing operation.
Yeah, gotcha.
Annually.
So yes, what the letter requests is what my motion is.
Council needs to see the Mental Health Sales Tax Fund at all before you vote?
Yes, I would like to see that, Kathleen, please.
So I have some additional comments too. The, when we first brought up, and what I tried to explain here a couple of times, and Vanessa was present at the Mental Health Sales Tax Discussion, of her handling large amounts separately from what we would rate and approve at our committee, she expressed that she could handle it, that they would have the capacity. Obviously, they need to develop those capacities, but she expressed hope that they could handle it, and so it, it isn't really outside of the RFP process, it's just money that we earmarked to them to handle more expeditiously. So however we do it, I'm in favor of it. We do need to see a full accounting. I think my numbers are pretty accurate because I've been asking all along, and we're hovering right about 20 million, and we take in over a million a month, but we, we obviously need to have a full accounting and know exactly what we're committing to, but I don't want to lose control of this. I don't, I really have great faith and confidence in Vanessa and Michael and their detailed stewardship of these programs, so I, I want to make sure they are fully involved, and I want to make sure that our jail services gets exactly what they need right now. I don't want to have any gaps or see that in this project, they're not fully included and their needs aren't fully met.
Thank you, Counselor Medviji. Kathleen, can we hear from Emily or Michael?
Yeah, so Michael, I believe, is in the room, so he'll come share, because Vanessa was able to have a quick discussion with me and her staff regarding this request and the process, so I've asked Michael to bring that forward. And then Kristen, can you pull up the adopted Mental Health Sales Tax slide? If not, I can send it to you.
I can also share it when you guys are ready, if you need me to, Kathleen.
Okay.
Good afternoon, can you hear me?
Yeah, it's the six-year forecast, Kristen. Yes, Michael, sorry.
No, no worries, Kathleen. So good afternoon, Michael Torres, managing manager, three with Clark County Community Services. Shortly before Vanessa left, and I'm here on behalf of Vanessa, and she's out, shortly before she left, she did have the opportunity to look at the letter, had a conversation with me, I know she also shared a couple of things with Kathleen Otto, and Chair Medviji, I, I do want to make you aware that if the council moves forward with this, which is absolutely, is not something that we are opposed to, this is absolutely appropriately a council decision, but that would change the ability of block granting moving forward, potentially change the ability of, of doing a block grant, moving forward to DCS for future years to manage an RFP, because the ongoing operational commitment that would be made would change what mental health sales tax funds might be available for the purposes of block granting moving forward. So Vanessa did ask me to let you know that if we move forward in supporting the operational funding of the bridge shelter, that we put a pause or hold back on the block granting of funds to DCS to manage an RFP separately. She also asked, her preference is that in terms of the decision being made, whether or not we do operational support with Mental Health Sales Tax Funds, that that go to the full Mental Health Sales Tax Advisory Board to discuss and decide, and DCS would absolutely support any of the informing, what the process, what the contracts, anything coming forward, but the decision itself to, to whether or not and how we move forward is really appropriately for the Mental Health Sales Tax Advisory Board. So I do know she really wanted me to share those things. Our inclination as community services, which I think would be shared by the council, is if, if the county is putting funds in this, it should be available to the population across the county, and if the, and if the county is putting funds into this, it, it should participate in the systems of care that serve the countywide. So whether you're talking criminal justice, behavioral health, homeless services, it would be integrated with, you know, the systems of care that are there in terms of how we provide the services.
Can I ask one clarifying question? Michael, what I heard you say essentially from further discussion with Vanessa, is that if we move forward with this, you don't, you don't want it in addition to another $5 million or so, that, that would exceed your capacity to manage, but you would be able to manage this project if we were to move it forward as a council.
We think that this is an important enough issue between the city and the county, that the decision, the valuation of how to move forward and whether to move forward or not, is appropriately done by the council and the Mental Health Sales Tax Advisory Board, not by DCS running that, the RFP itself, but we would absolutely, in the process of you receiving the proposal, evaluating the proposal, the Mental Health Sales Tax Advisory Board evaluating the proposal, we would be there to support with technical assistance and any advice that's needed in, in doing that evaluation.
Thank you for that. So to the council, I think the solution here is pretty straightforward. We put it through the normal RFP process, but we accelerate the Mental Health Sales Tax RFP process, which means we're going to have to meet pretty soon and more regularly, and to work with our, the existing stakeholders on that committee. That's my proposal.
Thank you, Counselor. Go ahead, Counselor.
Just one last comment. I think that the motion that currently on the table is a good compromise to this. I think that it is putting the majority through the RFP process as it should be, and then it's kind of, it's authorizing one short-term lump sum due to a time constraint. If they have property identified and it walks away, that could be really detrimental because there is a severe challenge finding properties that appropriately work for this particular use.
Thank you. I have a comment I'm hoping that Jamie could answer. So if we do this, if this partnership happens, is the county, would they participate in identifying the property where this would be, the shelter would be located?
No, we've, we've already identified a property that we're looking at. Certainly they could come see it.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other council comments?
I had a quest, a follow-up question for Michael. Were you making a distinguish, a distinction between operational funding and this perhaps one-time capital funding in terms of the block granting and all of those things that I don't quite understand?
Yeah, yes, I guess I was, I, just because there are two, there are two different requests. One is a one-time lump sum that it may impact the availability of Mental Health Sales Tax now, but we know what the fund balances are now. What we don't know is, you know, what, what is going to be the revenue of Mental Health Sales Tax moving forward in the future? So if they're moving forward, it, I think the reason Vanessa would like to pause on the idea of block granting to community services funds to do an RFA, is if we make this commitment moving forward, the funds might not really be, like, we don't know what funds will be available in the future to, on an ongoing recurring basis to be doing an RFA, like, to, to use that block grant. So I think she, her, her thought was to put a pause on it for now, if this decision is made, so we see how that looks moving forward once we have more visit, more experience with, with what this fiscal commitment would really be.
Right, and that would be for the operational?
Correct.
Right, got it, thanks.
And Michael, wasn't it that for both the capital and operational requests together, Vanessa's wanting that to go through the normal Mental Health Sales Tax process?
Yes, I think she was, I, and I'm sorry, I'm speaking, I'm speaking for her. I think that what was most important to her was that the decision be made by the Mental Health Sales Tax Advisory Board and the council, just because of, of the, the fact that it's a very important decision, the fact that it's a big ask, the fact that the relationships between, you know, affects the relationship between the city and the county, you know, that that's appropriate. I, I think that was what was most important, in terms of due diligence and order and process and stuff like that, we always prefer what we have in process, and an RFP process that's in place would be a preference.
So, so all that being said, I, I hear what Glenn had said, and Glenn, respectfully, I, I am going to vote against it, because what I would rather see, and I think we've heard it from other counselors, we want to see the regular RFP process used in some manner. I want it in the RFP process. My, my caveat to that is, and I guess hopefully, if I'm able to make the motion later, is that we accelerate that process. We have an earlier meeting, we have more meetings, so that we can comply with a timeline that will work for Vancouver's request, because I want to see this happen. We just need to accelerate our RFP process within the Mental Health Sales Tax Fund.
A question, this is to Glenn. Wasn't the first, I think your motion was, in a sense, the combination of, of two thoughts, and was it correct that the first one was to use the regular RFP process for the initial part of the, of the, well, the annual process, let me put it that way? Was that going through the regular RFP process in your motion?
So my motion was that we support the capital cost at this point, and that allows the city to purchase the property, and then the ongoing, the annual expenses go through the traditional RFP process.
So in that way, it was really two separate ideas, correct? And I was going to suggest that they be separated for voting purposes, because some of us might vote for one and not the other, which would achieve at least a part of what you're looking for there. But if that's not acceptable?
What would you suggest?
That's fine, to have the regular RFP process be used as, as you described, and then, secondly, to separate out the initial capital costs, whether or not they would be funded? And have that be a separate motion?
So Counselor Berman, is that a friendly amendment to the motion?
Well, it, it could be, yes. I, I would not make it though unless that was acceptable to the maker of the motion, so that's why I was asking.
I would prefer to keep it together.
Okay, that's fine, and I will not make a, a friendly amendment, Leslie.
So I think I heard.
But I will vote no.
I, I think I heard the second by Counselor Marshall, so, and we've discussed it, so I will say, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
I meant to be an aye, that my, Mike was non.
So Karen, I'd be happy for you to make a, a motion that, that suited what you were looking at at this time.
How about I make, how about I'll make the motion, I really like what Counselor Medviji mentioned, I'll motion for the regular RFP process and to accelerate the Mental Health Sales Tax selection process.
I'll second that.
Right, any discussion?
Yeah, I have a comment. I think June 10th was really what they were looking at as a deadline for securing the property that the city of Vancouver is looking at.
Just equal comment, I also will vote no, obviously not, because I'm opposed to going through the RFP process, but it just has to do with that time deadline. I think this is a situation where we need to act right now.
Right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed, nay?
Nay.
Nay.
Right, the motion carries, the regular RFP process with the accelerated Mental Health Sales Tax selection process. All right, thank you. All right, moving on to counselor reports, do we have any counselor reports?
Yes, I do.
I have a counselor, oh, go ahead, Counselor Berman.
Go ahead, I, I'm happy to get organized here first.
Okay, great, thank you. I just wanted to report back, I serve on the audit, the county's Audit Oversight Committee, and I just wanted to make a note that they received a prestigious award for the small shop audit that was performed on the Public Works Project Management Delivery and Oversight. It's the Distinguished Knighton Award, this is awarded by the Association of Local Government Auditors, so peer group evaluates like audits that have been accomplished in 2023 for their significant impact, the persuasive conclusions, gathering appropriate methodology for the feasible recommendations, and a report that's clear and concise. So I wanted just to tip our hat to the Audit Department, Larry Stafford's in the room, so kudos to you all for that. And then I did want to also note that we're in the process, the Auditors Department has been doing a scoping process to prioritize work plan and audits and internal reviews for the next, I think, two to three years. work plan and audits and internal reviews for the next, I think, two to three years. And I think you've all, everyone on the council, and I think the department heads as well have participated in that. So I'm happy to be a part of that. And I did learn at the last meeting that it was rather part of the routine that when an audit or review was completed, they would come back to the council and brief the council on that information. And I would just suggest and hope that the council would support continuing that practice, even though it's fallen by the wayside for a few years. I think it provides really important information that impacts both policy and budget decisions that we'll be making. So I just want to put that forward.
Thank you councillor Marshall for that update. Councillor Bowerman?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to give you a follow-up on the testimony that was given by several people who came to council meeting about, I think it was about three meetings ago, asking that we have an accessible community advisory committee. And so I met with the group of individuals who have an interest in that. And wow, what an energized group. We're going to meet again on Thursday, May 30 at 3:00 PM. It is virtual. So if anyone else, including those who would have, need to talk about their own situation in an accessible community, if you'd like to attend, everybody would be invited to come. Just let me or Kristin know and we'll make sure that you get an invitation. At that meeting, bylaws will be drafted. And we're going to start with work from Kitsap bylaws, which were provided by a member of the Governors' Committee that is on, they call it ACAC, Accessible Community Advisory Committee. And their bylaws are a great place to start because they cover the topics that certainly need to be addressed, although ours will probably be a little bit more specific in, in some ways, given the nature of our experience with advisory committees, frankly. And then we will have another meeting in a couple of weeks after that where we will finalize the bylaws, put together with the help of our policy advisor, a listing of things that the county would do to support such a committee. And that doesn't include funding, that includes other support that we would offer in terms of meeting place, maybe offering the virtual kinds of things, maybe a website and so on. So then the ultimate entity to approve is the Governors' Accessible Community Advisory Committee after we have given it our local approval. So that's a bit about the procedure that lies ahead, and you're welcome to participate at any point that interests you.
Karen, can I ask some clarifying questions?
Of course.
First of all, I absolute, I missed that, that meeting. I was on vacation, but I heard a lot about it. And I applaud you being so central to moving this forward. Is this a committee that will belong to Clark County as an advisory committee to us? So have, did I miss where we already voted to approve the committee, or are you doing all this?
That is, this is preliminary to giving to Lesley, the county manager, and ultimately council, something to look at to approve.
So I'm absolutely fully supportive of this initiative. I just, I wouldn't want you to go to so much work and then have the council ultimately vote it down. Is there some way to get the council vote and a work session or something to, to give this the thumbs up? You know, it's kind of a putting the cart before the horse, doing all this work on bylaws without it being first approved.
For me, it's not that big of a problem. I'm kind of used to doing bylaws. I'm happy to do that so that there is something that council could consider, edit, you know, whatever you would like to do. And that includes the procedure for going forward, which you're suggesting a change in procedure now. And I think we need to have those procedures subject to change all through the process too. So, and it's kind of odd with the Governors' Committee involved as an approving agent too, isn't it? I mean, that's a little bit different than what we usually have.
I applaud your efforts. I look forward to seeing.
Thank you.
Same.
Chair, I would just want to thank you councillor Bowerman as well. And if you need to have an initial thumbs up on the efforts that you're taking, I'm prepared to raise my thumb.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Same. Thank you so much.
It's my pleasure, truly.
Other council reports?
Yes.
I have one. Oh, I'm sorry. Did you say something councillor Young?
Yes, just a couple real quick. One is we met, the opioid abatement council met this previous week and kind of went over some of the details of exactly what we had approved. We just kind of ironed out what we had approved as a group to make sure that we all agreed on some of the changes to some of the, or the applications that we're looking at approving. And just went over some kind of procedural things. But I think that is our last meeting, and I can't remember exactly when, but the, the awards are going to be coming out pretty soon, pretty soon. Sue, do you remember what date it was?
I didn't hear a date, but I think it will come back to the council before it's for final approval. So hopefully soon.
And then just one last thing too. Was able to be a part of the NAMI Walk this weekend, which was fun. It was at Marine Park. It was perfect weather for it. And NAMI is a wonderful organization, and it was a great event for the community.
Thank you councillor Young. It was great weather on Saturday, I have to say. I actually participated in the Hazeldale parade of vans, which was a lot of fun. And it was great seeing the kids out there and catching all the candy and seeing equestrian things going on. And that was very interesting. And I actually was walking behind the float that got first place, which was an alien spaceship, and they were giving out alien balloons. So it was very fun. I wanted to go over, I was participating in the Washington State Association of Counties last Thursday and Friday. They focused on six priorities as far as bringing legislation to our lobbyists. And I wanted to let everybody know that Clark County's priority for seeking funding for the county trial court public defense costs was unanimously voted on by all counties for indigent defense. And those counties, well, number one, I want to say also thank you to Jordan for authoring the majority of that language, which was adopted also by Grace Harbor, Kitsap, Clickitat and Thurston Counties. They are going to do their best to lobby to get support for that. And I did not realize until attending the WASCAC meeting that they have prioritized this request for eight years with little traction. It's a concern by all counties unanimously. I think it was number one on the priority list of six. So that was great news and was great to meet the other commissioners and councillors throughout the state of Washington. And it will be great to see WASCAC and Clark County here soon. So that's it from me. Do we have any policy updates?
So I was going to give you a very quick.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize councillor Mevige.
As opposed to all your great weather stories, I was, I did a presentation at Lake Vancouver during the regatta, the qualifications for the Nationals for rowing. Amazing event. And I was in a deluge. I mean, it was basically a thunderstorm, but everybody stood out there and listened to my comments anyway. So it, we did present through my comments from Clean Water Division, all that the county is doing to help clean up Vancouver Lake. So all the parents would hear, would hear it. It was an amazing event. About 3,500 participants were there, family and, and competitors, mainly between Oregon and Washington. And these would qualify for the finals in Sarasota, Florida. So anyway, I didn't have the weather you did, unfortunately.
Thank you for that councillor Mevige. All righty. Thank you. Moving on to policy updates. Jordan, do we have any policy updates?
I do have just a brief update councillor. I wanted to follow up on, on your description of the WASCAC Legislative Steering Committee meeting, which was, which was really great. And I just wanted to, for council and for the record, just kind of go through the top WASCAC priorities, and then talk a little bit about our other priority, which was jail capital funding, which was not agreed to as a priority for WASCAC, and just kind of talk a little bit about where we are with that, why they didn't pick that as a priority, and kind of some of the next steps that I'm starting to work on, just so that council is aware and can give any follow-up direction. So, so for WASCAC, as councillor Belkot mentioned, there was actually, so there are actually seven, so six plus the indigent defense. Originally, we were gonna, the LSE group was only going to have six total, but because of the interest in some of these, they weren't able to get it down to six. So it's just seven here. And those priorities were new county revenue sources, funding for indigent defense, as mentioned, funding for, or support for rural county coroners. Another issue that was key to the rural counties, which was related to FSEC and state and local development requirements and liability in local permitting when citing clean energy projects. Right now, the state can basically come in and override different local development and planning requirements. And so there's some tension there. And then creating accountability in the behavioral health continuum of services by improving contractual standards, particularly around reprocurement, addressing county housing access and affordability, and funding the preservation and maintenance of the county transportation system. So those proposals are going to be refined by WASCAC staff over the next few months. They will be coming back for review and further refinement. And so as that happens, we'll definitely keep you in the loop. And I'm sure I'll be working with councillor Belkot on that as well. The other thing I just wanted to mention related to that is that, you know, we were hoping to get jail capital funding as, as a priority item. We were not successful. I had, you know, I kind of asked some of the WASCAC staff why that was the case and based on their analysis. And really, this is something that, that has been in the works for a little while. You know, there's a sense, it sounds like among many legislators, that they've already done some work around this or have work ongoing related to, there was a jail survey study that is ongoing. So the jail survey work has been done last year and into this year. And the Washington State Institute of Public Policy is going to be coming out with that jail survey study in December of this year. And so that may inform where the legislature wants to go. Also, the Ruckles House Centre is, has convened a jail and juvenile facilities task force that has started their work as of December of last year. Not clear when that report's going to be out. And so with those things floating out in the ether, it was decided basically that this is not an appropriate time for the Association of Counties to pursue this as one of their top priorities. However, we were not the only county for which this was a priority. Stevens and Yakima County both submitted proposals to WASCAC to have jail capital funding be a priority. So we're going to work with them. I've already made contact with a few folks in those counties. And then I've also been doing a bit of research on what other jails in the, in the state are being worked on. Certainly at the county level, Spokane, Grant, Watcom, they're all in the process of updating or renovating jails. Skamania and Clickitat County both have had some issues related to their jails as well. This is something that is ongoing. And so I'm actually going to be meeting with Josh Nanica, our lobbyist, next week to talk a little bit of strategy and how we start to move the ball forward on some of our priorities. So more to come, but just wanted to let you know that that's kind of where we're at in terms of the policy process of honing in and figuring out our strategy around these issues for the next legislative session.
Thank you, Jordan. I also wanted to add, I believe it was Grant. I'd have to double check on my notes because I have my big WASCAC packet here. They have been going through a design process for their jail as well. And they've, they're having funding issues related to inflation on the price of construction. So that was their concern as well. So it was nice to know that we have potential partners out there, that we're all facing the same challenges. So it will be interesting to see how that's approached. So thank you, Jordan. It was great to go to the WASCAC meeting with you. Lots of great connections. I learned a ton. So it will, it will be interesting to see how things unfold. And thank you for all your support and your policy guidance. I appreciate it. All right. I see there are no executive sessions scheduled for today. If there are no further comments, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.